Item one, call the meeting to order and read the members present maps.
Ellis?
Here.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Here.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
Before we get to that, if you board members want to look at the attachments without having to go over to the attachments, you can go to your toolbar and then do attachments, and then your attachments are with your agenda, and then you can just read them from there if that's best for you on that. But if you want to do it the other way, it's fine to go back and forth and hitting that attachment when you go to that.
Those are just tabs.
Okay.
Okay?
These are just your tabs. You'll just go back to them.
I'm not going to go anywhere else.
Okay.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Elementary School District Number One of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date time and place of this regular meeting was filed in the August of the county court of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of this date time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness this. Witness my hand this 29th day of June 2016.
Item three, the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items, the consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of 3A addition of items of new business to the agenda?
Yes, there is one. We had a late payment from Cherokee on a co-op, and we should not have taken it, so we have to add an encumbrance check and then give that back to Cherokee tomorrow. So it will show up later in the meeting as a regular encumbrance sheet and a pay order back to the Cherokee Public Schools.
3B?
And it is, if I can get it, co-op fund number 12, PO number 71, totaling $12,300 with change orders dash 001-071 for a year-to-date total of $546,139.99, and you'll see that down in the new business when we get to that.
3B minutes of the June 6, 2016 regular board meeting. 3C, approval of activity account fundraisers.
We had two baseball tournaments, a high school and a middle school, and very well
3D, approval of inter-account transfers.
You will see, no, excuse me, nothing there.
Okay. And 3E, approval of function changes.
And these are again, no new money, just changing to make sure that we are in compliance with all of state codes, and you will see more again next month. So this is just changing money from one function to the other to balance out, to make sure that we're state-compliant with our OCAST system.
Any questions on item three? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, those items referenced in 3B, 3C, and 3E.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Item four, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY 2016. Item 4A, general fund number 11. I'm not going to read all of this because I forgot my reading glasses, so I might have to go to just the number of the, I'm sorry. 4B, co-op fund number 12, 4C, general fund number 21, and 4D, child nutrition fund number 22, and 4E, gift fund number 81.
General fund encumbrances, some of the larger ones on there are ABC purchase order 861, that is an annual maintenance and some repair to the existing activity bus. Our new activity bus will be completed next week. We're making plans probably July 14, 15 to bring both buses back. And then Zeller Flooring Company, 869, that is to replace all of the old carpet down in the speed room and go back to a tile flooring, and to take care of that. Really, and then on 883, First Choice Carpet Cleaning, all Longfellow carpets were steam cleaned and they really look good. We have a capability of a cold cleaning, but it doesn't bring out the stains as well, so we contracted with them. Any other questions on any of those other encumbrances? And the co-op really didn't have anything except for this change order here that we'll vote on at the added agenda item late. Building fund, nothing there, and child nutrition to report at this point in time. Gift fund, same. Most of these will be reported again on the July regular meeting.
Can you read that one yet?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the purchase order encumbrances for the funds for FY 16, 4A through 4E.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, have one resignation, Lily Fink, who's a parent. She is actually going to go and work for America, and no reassignments, nothing to report on strategic planning. Legislative updates, that information is in your computer, iPad, of the new laws that were presented at TECOSA, and those are all the laws that will affect our schools next year, so you can read those at your convenience. We are looking at how they affect us and changing either student handbooks or whatever to meet these new laws, but that's all that pertain to education, so you have them right Communications, you know, summer projects are going well. Like I said, we've got all the carpets cleaned at Longfellow, home ec room about halfway through with reconstruction there. Lincoln, we completed the bottom classroom, we got it remodeled where we're going to host our co-op, and Sherry Lovelace downstairs there, they will have an outside entry, so that will be taken care of, and he's got a couple, maybe one more bathroom that he's remodeling there. We're going to be remodeling the boys' bathroom at Washington later on this summer, and the indoor facility almost completed of the Pete and Ruth Leslie Foundation. So we may take over ownership later on this month, and we may have to call a special board meeting to do that, but if you have a chance, you ought to go look at it, it's nice. Other problems that we're having, yes, of course with the rain, we've got that really bad road going down the football field that we're looking to try to do something with, and I've got a couple people looking, going to give us some ideas about how to fix it and so forth, and we may just have to concrete that whole pathway down there to keep it from eroding, I don't know. And we're in the process of organizing, getting the softball lights back up on the softball field, and that may cost us about $10,000 with new electric wires and some new light bulbs, but we've got the poles, and OG&E is going to put them up for us free, and we've got people that are going to donate their time and dig for the underground, but it's still going to cost us some money here later on.
Is OG&E going to put the poles back up where the levels are on the practice field?
We have a scheme from Northwest Electric and our engineers of where the poles need to be, and so they will be put in the proper areas with the proper light fixtures and so forth on them. I looked at LED lights, but, ooh, that was way too much, so we decided we'd go back for right now at this point in time and just get it up. But summer projects are going well. We do have staircases going down to the parking lot completed, slarge completed those, we're going to paint those hopefully this week so we can take care of that, so. But so far, I think all the principals and everything are really good about what's going on in the summer, and the buildings look clean, so before long, school will be here and we'll be ready to go.
Where were these steps?
On the football field, from the parking lot, you know, we had all of that tier, and we didn't have steps for people to walk from one tier to the next, so we made some iron steps down.
I didn't know which side it was. It was on the west side.
It's on the west side. And so things are looking good for the schools and everything. Any questions or any thing at this time?
Are there any plans for any new bleachers?
Our bleachers really are good, and, you know, they don't look good, but they are, they're solid. To be real honest with you, we may have to look at resurfacing that whole track again because of being worn and more people utilize it than we think, and we're the only track in town. And also, may have to do some more drainage down there repaired because of the drain coming off of the new building and those types of things, so that's something that we may have to look at, maybe have to do a small bond issue in the future to get that all taken care of. Any other things? That's all I have at this time.
Item six, items of current business, 6A, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the activity fund chart of accounts for FY 17.
You have those in your attachments, and this is something that we have to do each and every year, so I would make the recommendation that we approve these.
I still move.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
6B, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the activity
fund expenditures for each sub-account for FY 17.
These expenditures allow each activity to be able to spend money in just certain areas, and I don't know how long we've been doing it, but they have not changed on what they can spend money for, but each and every year the board must approve those also, so I would also make the recommendation to approve these, there has not been any changes.
So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes. Yes.
6C, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the activity fund list of sources of revenues for FY 17.
And I don't think these have been changed either, so these are the same.
I make a motion that we approve the investment resolution, it was referenced in 6D.
Or in 6C, I believe, weren't we?
Sources of revenue?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I was moving along here. 6C, sorry.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Management investment of funds, and that is something that we have to do each and
every year. It's board policy, but rules say that we vote on it each and every year to make sure that it is in our board policy under CDA.
So moved. Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
6E.
Same thing. This loan agreement is an annual thing, and it's something that we have to do to make sure that federal government knows that we will pay if they can't pay, basically.
Move that we approve the loan agreement for food services for fiscal year 17.
Wait a second.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
6F, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the following assignments for FY 17, listed 6F1 through a bunch of, I'm trying to roll through it here.
35.
6F35.
These are all assignments that are made yearly. Pam will be taking Becky's place in this, or somebody is, but these are assignments that need to be made, and other than changing around the three secretaries here and Becky, everybody else has the same assignments as last year.
What is on 30? I'm not picking one, Steve.
Oh.
I just want to know, what is a reading sufficiency?
Reading sufficiency is a law, a third grade law, basically, that if you cannot, it changes this next year where our OCT tests that we take at the end of the year, third graders have to score proficient or better to be promoted to fourth grade, along with, there are several different good cause exemptions that you can make, and then we have to do reports on it.
So he's the administrator in charge to make sure that we are current with all the regulations for the reading sufficiency.
Okay, that's what I know.
And then he fills out the report, and then I get to certify.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the assignments?
We have a motion for 6F.
I still move.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
6G, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the renewal of the lease of five passenger buses for FY 17 as required under the provisions of the lease agreement dated July 1st, 2014, and October 1st, 2014 between Alba Public Schools and Ross Transportation.
This is the only way that we can have a multiple year of leasing on the buses, and this is just the renewal of our lease of last year, and I would recommend to the board that we approve this.
It's not attached?
No, it was last year's lease. You approved it last year.
We have a motion for 6G.
So moved.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
6H, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the renewal of the lease of Apple Computers for FY 17 as required under the provisions of the lease agreement dated April 8, 2014 between Alba Public Schools and Apple Incorporated.
And again, no change on the lease, board approved it a year ago, and this is just the renewal of the same lease for our Apple Computers.
So moved.
I second it.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
6I, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the renewal of the lease allowing use of the NWSU football stadium and parking facilities during Alba High School football games for FY 17 as required under the provisions of the lease agreement dated June 29, 2015 between Alba Public Schools and Northwestern Oklahoma State University.
And again, same lease that you approved, no new items, no problems whatsoever, so.
Are we still on the payback back?
Yes. Four years, so we just got this year two more. And then, my understanding is there are no more leases?
Is that $25 a year?
Yes.
What do you mean, no more leases? It's not an option for us?
No charges to us.
No charges to us?
Excuse me.
Still can use the facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Same thing that prior to coming, we helped with the lights, so I would recommend to the board that we continue this.
I still move.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
And this is different?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
More board for more than one year.
6J, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the renewal lease and service agreement for seven digital copiers for FY 17 as required under the provisions of the lease agreement dated June 29, 2015 between Alba Public Schools and Dirk's Copy Products Incorporated.
Same lease, very happy with Dirk, so I would make the motion that we approve this lease.
Do they do upgrades on this?
Yes, on our copiers and they do.
So moved. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
6K, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the FY 16 continuing contracts, lease agreements for FY 17 listed 6K1, 6K2, 6K3.
My supply, supplies are low ag with oxygen, those types of equipment. I've been very happy with them. Of course, Penny Bose is our mailing machine, and for the most, happy with them every now and then until they bring this machine and we have to figure it out. Index fire alarm, that's out of Tossa, been very happy with them, and that's a mandatory thing also, so they're awesome.
Make the motion we approve 6K.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Alice?
6L, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the following contracts for FY 17 listed 6L1 through 6L5.
I don't know how long we've been with Oklahoma School Assurance Group on this, but I've been very happy with them, as you can see in the contract, that we have a credit of $6,602 toward our premium above, and been very happy, so if you have any questions, ask the contract, but I would recommend to the board that we approve the Oklahoma School Assurance Group contract.
Is that one and two?
Well, we can, you can do it all at one time if you want to. The same thing with Oklahoma Insurance Group, they cover our insurance, property, and so forth. They've been very good to us, it's very compatible to larger insurance and.
Oh, I was sorry, I was just reading it differently.
Did they mail you the dividend, and then you apply it, or did they just take?
No, they just deducted it from the.
Because it looks like O-SIG is different than O-SAG.
When I was looking at it, I just didn't look closely enough.
So moved 6L1.
Do you want to approve 1 through 5 in one vote?
Kellogg Solverr is a new company that we're with, and that has saved us money on our E-Rate, making sure that we're in compliance with E-Rate. You know, we've paid some penalties probably in the past that we probably shouldn't have, and Kellogg Solverr is. And Kellogg Sovereign is a company that helps us with our E-Rate, and we're in strict compliance now, so we shouldn't have anything. They've been really good to work with, so I would recommend to the board on that. And Woods County Board of Commissioners Agreement. That's something that we need to do so that we can work with them and buy and purchase things from them. Oh, what did I do there? And then Northwest Technology Agreement. That is to be a part of Northwest, practical nursing career major, and letting those kids coming into our buildings and our students to be out there. So, I would recommend all to the board as part of the little slate there.
So move 6L1 to 6L5.
Do I have a second?
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 7, New Business.
And if you'll look at the attachment. The encumbrance register, and so we're going to have to pay them back because Mr. Buddy Carroll said that we should not have taken it. And what happened, we found out in September that they were going to drop out of the co-op. So, I think Sherry sent them a third of their bill for three months' operation. And Sherry, when did we get it, last week?
Yeah, May 9.
May the 9th. And really didn't know what it was, and checking with Buddy Carroll, to make everything meet on the federal guidelines and so forth, we need to send that back to Cherokee, and they need to take care of it. So, that's why I just changed order, this new agenda item.
So, they don't know it? Is that correct?
No, they don't know it. So, I'd recommend to the board that you approve the new business item of the co-op fund registry, encumbrance registry.
I shall move.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes. McDermott? Aye.
Item 8, Signing of Documents Approved by Earlier Action.
This is really an easy reading because you have all these tracks.